That concludes that portion of our conversation tonight.
Yes, it does.
Okay, um, next on our agenda is the upcoming American Education Week. Um, so just to be clear, I believe what we heard is the staff, uh, just to get, you know, the gift that we give, the staff still want, um, the pumpkin bars. And so it's tradition for the board to, um, contribute their own funds, uh, to pay for the pumpkin bars. And before, I think it was, it was pumpkin bars before during American Education Week. And then also during that time, um, Martha will send out a, uh, calendar for different board members to sign up when the bars are delivered and then we go and we meet and we, uh, go to each individual school, um, based upon our schedules to make sure we've got coverage.
Do we have dates for that week?
Um, it's the first week in November.
Oh, it's the second.
Eighteenth maybe?
Okay, eighteen now. Eighteen to twenty-three. A week before. Yeah, I'll let you know. And she'll set, she'll set up, uh, the different schools and, uh, for people to sign up. Um, but the first thing I want to do is make sure that every board member is okay with the, uh, with personally donating and, uh, also providing the pumpkin bars. I believe we're still the favorite, right? Okay.
My only question with that is, do we cover everybody? I mean, there are different dietary restrictions. I don't want to give a treat to people that can't eat it. But maybe that's not a concern, but I just.
There's gluten-free or?
I mean, they're amazing.
Yeah.
But they are amazing.
But I just want to make sure that everybody can have one.
Each school prepares the pumpkin bars and they kind of know their staff.
Oh, great.
If there's issues, so I can make sure that they accommodate accordingly.
And my other question is, I know we, we didn't talk about this, so I appreciate you actually bringing this forward this year and being transparent that it's about a hundred dollars per board director to cover the pumpkin bar cost. And since as a board, we came under, we came under our budget by like forty thousand dollars. I guess I would rather have it come out of our board budget since we have the budget there for it. And actually, it says in Minnesota state law that we are supposed to be, um, providing, um, I don't know what the language of the statute says, but it says something about how we are supposed to be able, we are supposed to be providing things to our staff to improve, you know, their morale and all these things. It's actually written in state statute. Um, I'd have to pull up the statute, but I would rather have it come out of our board budget. I mean, I'm not, I just, I just think that's what the budget is for, so.
The problem with that is that our policy states that the only way we can provide food, um, for staff is if it's a four-hour meeting over a course of a meal and that, um, you are doing work over the meal hour. That's, we don't allow anybody to have any meetings at all in our district and provide food unless the legislature.
To use our budget, you're saying?
To use district funds.
That's why traditionally everybody is.
But we do though. I mean, but we do. We have cookies for different events and, I mean, that's where I, I've seen the charges come through on the check register for different things. And so I don't understand what, I mean, if we're under budget as a board, why can't it come out of our board expense, our board budget? But, I mean, rather than paying out of our own pocket.
Again, we don't allow food for employees unless it's a four-hour meeting over a meal that you work during the meal time. So, um, there are exceptions, like Sam Hope has PT or the parent advisory committees that he provides meals for, those are community-based, those aren't staff-based. So we just don't allow food for staff.
Can I, uh, just to expedite this conversation?
You bring in food, you bring your food for the finance committee too.
Out of my own pocket.
Oh, okay, that's interesting.
I do not ask for reimbursement for that.
Okay, I've just, I've seen it, so, but maybe we need to change the policy because Minnesota state statute, and I'd have to look up the email that I sent to your press meeting last year.
Talks about recognition of employees, not necessarily food.
I, I think it's worth looking at the statute because if our statute is not aligned to our policy, then maybe we need to relook at our policy. And what policy is it, by the way?
It's not a policy, it's a procedure.
So maybe its procedure is not aligning with Minnesota state statute.
There also is statutes around how much you're allowed to gift, there's a gift law. It can't be over five dollars per person and you have to include everybody under a five-dollar gift law.
Can I, can I just, um, if we, so first of all, um, cause kind of what I'm hearing is we have one person that does not want to contribute.
That is not true.
Okay, well, that's not true. So can we?
Oh, my gosh.
Cause we need to, we need to, um, just, it's a pretty simple discussion. Um, can we just do a thumbs up maybe to see if everyone's willing to split the cost and like we have done and actually, um, provide this out of our pockets to the teachers in celebration and recognition of American Education Week?
That's the, the way that I, I've always done it, going as far back as I can remember.
Okay. Is everyone good with that? And is everyone good with the pumpkin bars? Cause that's what they want.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, that's fine. I think we're going to change that come next year, so that's fine. We'll do that this year, so thank you.
I, I'm, so can I just?
Why are we changing it next year?
Cause I don't think it follows Minnesota state law. Why? That's why. I mean, I, I can, I'll do more research on it, but, um, I don't know any board, and I know a lot of board members in the state, I don't know if any board member pays out of their own pocket for it. So, let's just, if that's the will of the board, then let's move forward.
I think, I think as in years past, if certain board members aren't willing or, or want, or what, aren't paying, period. If certain board members aren't paying, I think the rest of the board is willing to upset at that cost. So, um, as that has happened in the past. So I think, I think that we know the will of the board for this year. I just, okay, is, are we good then? And is, are we, do we have everyone contributing or do we need to reallocate the cost?
That's good.
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 Can we vote it for Julie?
Okay.
Yeah.
Julie's been fine with it before. Director Atkinson, are you good or would you like to abstain?
No, I'm good. I, I just don't understand it because I think it violates Minnesota law, which I will do some research on, so.
Okay. So we're all good? Pumpkin bars?
And it'll be about a hundred dollars per person, right?
Well, the person.
That's what it was last year, so.
Okay, um, so we're good with that and then we'll wait the schedule for American Education Week and sign up for that appropriately. And the next, we have, uh, three proclamations. And so, um, usually, um, Director White, what we normally do is just spread the love and let everyone, uh, read off one. So in honor of you being a new board member, could you please read the first proclamation for business and finance staff appreciation week?
I can. Let's take it there.
Prior Lake Savage Area Schools recognizes October 28th through November 1st, 2024 as Business and Finance Staff Appreciation Week. This week, we celebrate our thanks and gratitude for these essential staff. Whereas Prior Lake Savage Area Schools has nine business and finance staff, whereas business and finance staff are responsible for the overall district budget, processing payables and receivables, student nutrition and meals, transportation payments, completing the annual audit, tracking and reporting enrollment, monitoring contracts, maintaining account codes, preparing monthly financial reports and ensuring fiscal compliance. Whereas business and finance staff provide accurate and transparent financial reports for our Prior Lake Savage Area community and taxpayers such as preliminary and final budgets, property tax levies, audit summaries, enrollment updates, and more. Whereas business and finance staff are overseeing the $121 million general fund budget for the fiscal year 2025. Therefore, let it be resolved, the Board of Education hereby extends its appreciation to all Prior Lake Savage Area School business and finance staff for their fiscal responsibility to our district, which ultimately impacts the success of our students, and declares October 28th through November 1st, 2024, the Business and Finance Staff Appreciation Week in Prior Lake Savage Area Schools.
And I would like to say thank you very much. Um, I've had the privilege of working with this staff for the last three years. They're some of the most dedicated, hardworking, um, truly phenomenal staff that, um, make things happen and I appreciate them being recognized because they really do work really hard. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you as well.
Um, the next proclamation is National School Psychologist Appreciation Week and, uh, Director Cosby, could you read that one?
National School Psychologist Appreciation Week, November 11th through the 15th. Prior Lake Savage Area Schools recognizes November 11th through 15th, 2024 as National School Psychologist Appreciation Week. This week, we celebrate our thanks and gratitude for these essential staff. Whereas during the week of November 11th through 15th, 2024, schools throughout the United States will celebrate National School Psychology Week to highlight the important work school psychologists and other educators do to help all students thrive. Whereas school psychologists apply expertise in mental health, learning, and behavior to help children and youth succeed academically, socially, behaviorally, and emotionally. They provide assessment and support to students and partner with teachers and other professionals to create safe, healthy, and supportive learning environments. Therefore, let it be resolved, the Board of Education hereby extends its appreciation to all Prior Lake Savage Area School psychologists for helping all students thrive, and declares November 11th through 15th, 2024 to be National School Psychologist Appreciation Week in Prior Lake Savage Area Schools.
Thank you. I want to thank the board for continuing to recognize these groups. I know a lot of them fall into student support services. Um, all right, we have eight school psychologists across the district and, um, they not only support special education, but they are integral in our child find. Um, so, and when students begin to struggle, they help our, you know, all staff find interventions and then track those interventions to see if we can help students where they're at. Um, so I think they do a big load of work for just eight of them. Um, so I'm really proud of the work that they do and, and again, thank you for recognizing them tonight.
Thank you. Okay, and then next we have Community Education Appreciation Week and Director Bullion, will you read this one?
Sure. Prior Lake Savage Area Schools recognizes November 10th through 16th, 2024 as Community Education Appreciation Week. Our district's more than 200 community education staff, advisory council members, and volunteers provide learning opportunities and resources for our community to develop lifelong skills. This week, we express our gratitude for these community educators. Whereas National Community Education Day will be celebrated on November 7th, 2024. Whereas the governor of Minnesota, Tim, Tim Walz, has proclaimed November 7th, 2024 as Community Education Day in the state of Minnesota. Whereas community education staff and volunteers deliver and support a wide range of educational opportunities for learners of all ages and stages of life, from early childhood to youth programs to adult education programs and more. Whereas the members of the Community Education Advisory Council serve the crucial role of sharing community perspectives to advise the department and the director in the fulfillment of the department mission. Whereas the Board of Education encourages all community members to engage in community education through participating in a wide variety of activities, programs, and services, helping provide new opportunities or serving on an advisory council. Therefore, let it be resolved, the Board of Education hereby extends its appreciation to community education staff, advisory council members, and volunteers for serving our entire community with learning opportunities and resources to develop lifelong skills, and declares November 10th through 16th, 2024 to be Community Education Appreciation Week in Prior Lake Savage Area Schools.
Thank you. That's probably one of the longest proclamations that you ever made. I thank you to the board. We do appreciate that you recognize, uh, the efforts and the work that our community education team puts into providing these opportunities for students in our community. I also have to thank the district staff, administration, uh, for their partnership and support. Clearly, we can't do what we do without partnership of our schools, the staff, allowing us to come in and utilize their spaces. Um, and a lot of them actually teaching and providing classes for us, so we do appreciate that. Um, I have an amazing team. Um, I was blessed three years ago to have the opportunity to come work in the Prior Lake Savage Area Schools, uh, working with this great team and feel really fortunate to be doing so. So thank you for recognizing those efforts.
Thank you for your leadership. Yeah. Thank you. Okay, on the policy, uh, the first policy we have is 606 dot five. Uh, and I will hand this over to Director Furman.
And to Chair Fran, members of the board to go over policy 606 dot five. Um, as you recall, this is a policy that we asked the board to, um, remove from our previous agenda, um, as we were receiving updated guidance from legal. Um, with the most recent sta, um, statutory changes, uh, there's just a lot of, um, information that was coming to us, so we wanted to, to bring this back to the policy advisory committee and, um, the original library selection group, um, to get, um, their, their inputs on it as well. So I'm just going to highlight some of the key differences from the model policy from our legal team. Um, the key difference that we added as we discussed last time we were reviewing the policy was having the library bill of rights, um, statement underneath the purpose to fulfill the statutory requirement of having an intellectual and academic, um, freedom statement. While the statute doesn't require it to be in policy, it does require the school to have one, um, in their, uh, school library collection development plan. Therefore, the policy advisory committee felt it'd be important just to keep this in the policy so that's easy for all community members to, to reference this. Um, this was a point of conversation last time we reviewed this, um, any concerns around the potential of the library bill of rights, um, and speaking to the different parental rights on that, and we have addressed that, that the, um, American Library Association, um, clearly states that, that the parental rights, um, still exist and we can talk about that a little bit later in the policy as well. The other, I'm going to skip or anything that's just formatting changes and just speak to any major content differences. Um, under section three, um, B, we did change the layout of those items, um, from what legal was recommending, just to make it a little bit more clear, that when looking at selection material, we, uh, the policy advisory committee felt very strongly that all materials, um, shall reflect ages and maturity levels of students in the buildings. Whereas previously, when it was located in a list that had an or attached to it, it made it sound like that was an option, whereas we wanted that to be, um, the case for all selection materials and make that very clear, that all materials should reflect age maturity levels of the students. And then from there, the library selection as a whole should include those, the, the rest of the, the bullets under there. And I'm noticing now with that change, there's a number change that will have to happen, so I'll get that cleaned up. The other differential that we went with from legal counsel under section three D was legal counsel, um, recommendation was to not accept donated materials, um, just so there's not that additional risk and administrative burden of processing donated materials, uh, where we felt very strongly as a policy advisory committee to allow for that. So we're still able to have community members donating materials, um, scholastic book fairs, being able to donate, um, uh, donate materials through all that and ensuring that those donated materials still would follow the policy and the selection guidelines, um, but still allow for that so that part of our strategic direction, making sure that we're optimizing those resources. The next change, um, as I referenced when talking about the intellectual and academic freedom statement, um, is under policy five. So, um, legal recommended that we do, would not be responsible for honoring parents, um, the ban for their students to have access to specific library material. We feel we have a very, um, proven process in place that allows for a stu, a parent or legal guardian to make the request to limit that access for their individual student or students, um, that we felt that was very, uh, important to still move forward with and include. Um, we did keep legal statement at the top of that, that parents and guardians are responsible for speaking with their parents about library materials they choose to access for independent reading, but then added back in our language from our previous policy drafts to make sure we can maintain our, our current practice, um, with partnering with, with families and partnering with parents and their guardians to have those conversations. The next one is underneath five E. Um, we did bring forward that we had a really robust conversation at all the different advisory committees and also at, at the board table when we were previously reviewing the document to have a conversation about who, um, who could be included in the review committee, so we pulled that language forward. Um, and I believe that's the only other major changes that we had from legal counsel's, um, draft of this policy. But Dr. Thomas or Dr. Edwards, if there's anything that I missed?
I think you covered it.
Director Bullion, everything covered from policy advisory?
Um, you did a great job. Thank you.
Yeah, my first question is that this policy also pseudo-went through the teaching and learning committee. I mean, I have emails from several of the people who were on that committee back in January when we first reviewed it. Will this be going back to teaching and learning committee?
Yeah, that would be our intent, would be to bring this back.
So before we vote on it, we bring it back to teaching and learning?
We have a teaching and learning committee next Monday.
Yeah, so we'll be reviewing it then?
Yeah, with updates.
Okay, all right. And then, um, I have several, several comments, but I don't know how we want to go through it. Um, I think that, you know, the, the more I look through this policy again and thinking about what you said about legal, I did read that in the law, but I don't see it in any other school district's policy. Now, I didn't look through every school district to be clear, you know, to be clear with you, I just kind of spot checked like five or six of them regarding the library bill of rights. And, um, I still am like adamantly opposed to having it in there because I think it up, it opens up a lot of strange things, like a library doesn't charge late fees and we actually charge late fees as a school district because my student has gotten them and he hasn't returned his books. I think it opens up a can of worms for privacy issues. Um, so I'd like to better understand, it's also not in the MSBA policy, so I really truly want to understand why this library bill of rights is on here because I think it opens, it opens up a lot of, um, can of worms. And where, if it's not on here, where does it need to be as it pertains to the Minnesota state statute? Cause I did see that little bit of information in the statute about it.
Director Atkinson, to be clear, legal guidance did not have this in their draft. Um, this was something that the, um, library selection material, um, original committee and the policy advisory committee, um, recommended to have in there for the purpose of having a one-stop shop for people to know what our academic and intellectual, um, freedom statement is. Um, so if it's not in policy, then it would need to be in our library's, uh, curriculum development plan materials in every single one of our libraries. Um, so that, that was the recommendation from the policy advisory committee and the library section, um, I don't even know what title that group was, I apologize, but the original group that started looking at this was, so it's a one-stop shop so that every, um, could, uh, our parents, our staff know where to find that versus having it somewhere else buried in a plan that might not be as easily accessible to community members, parents, something like that. So that was the rationale to have our academic freedom statement, um, referenced within the purpose pause of the policy.
I, I get it. I don't necessarily agree with it, cause like I said, I think it opens up a lot of can of worms to different things that, we're not a library ultimately, we can't have every book that a library would typically have, nor should we have every book that a library has. The other thing, and like I said, I have a lot of comments, I don't even know where to start on this, but, um, the, under definitions, under, um, definitions library A, it says this policy does not govern access to electronic materials that are accessed through the internet. But then if you go down to B, it says that library materials, um, means databases, which would be access through the internet. So it like contradicts each other. And it says also available to students in a library or through access to electronic materials. So like A contradicts B. Do you see what I'm saying? Like if we're saying, okay, this policy doesn't cover electronic materials or, or things that access through the internet, then how can we say that library materials are things that are electronic and on the internet? It like, it like, do you understand what I'm saying?
Yeah, so Director Atkinson, yeah.
Little conflict of interest there.
I think it's the, the understanding of that last sentence in section A because we have a separate policy that actually governs the electronic.
Just thought two-four, yeah.
Yeah, so, so we, we wanted that to make sure that that withstands, you know, the governance of the electronic, because we have a separate policy for it.
We could reference that policy there.
Um, and let me just.
Or maybe it's.
I thought it was, sorry.
It's, it's.
It's in the, it's in the progress opens already, so.
Okay. Thank you. And it says, um, it also says library materials do not include materials made available to students as part of the curriculum, but yet the students are going to.
Are you in A again or B?
Oh, I'm still back in B. I'm back in B.
B.
But it also says library materials do not include materials made available to, to students as part of the curriculum, but yet they do go to the library to check out books as a supplement to their curriculum. So I understand sort of what we're trying to say, but it's still, they're still part of their curriculum.
Don't we have a curriculum policy?
Yeah, we have a.
Yeah. So that's again the same concept.
Right, the same concept. And that was Pat, that was the 606.
Yeah. I also know districts would combine the two, but, um, the other thing is, um, under D, um, so I'm going forward unto D, um, we use the word obscene, but actually in the Supreme Court case, they used the word pervasively vulgar. And pervasively vulgar means that something is repeated, vulgarity is repeated multiple times throughout the material. And, um, I don't know, I just kind of like, because we do talk about the Supreme Court case here and that's actually where, even though the Supreme Court's case of PICO or whatever it is called, is where a lot of this is coming from. Um, I don't know, I kind of like to use, I like to use wording that was consistent with that, but, um.
So based off of legal's opinion, um, their, their rationale for including that is actually based off the Supreme Court case Miller versus California, which is referenced. Um, so it'd be my recommendation to stick with the legal's opinion on including that, that definition.
Okay. Um, and then let's see. Um, under initial selection of library materials, there's, there's A, a B. Okay, so we go into the criteria. So this is the criteria. I do like how it says shall reflect the ages and maturity levels of students in the building. Um, I read in the, I think the MSBA policy has enrich and support curriculum versus enrich, support, or supplement curriculum. It's just a little, that's like semantical type of stuff, but they use enrich and support curriculum. Um, and then the other word I kept hearing, whether it's in policies or even going back to that, um, Supreme Court case, is they use, the book should be academically suitable. And so one thing that we don't talk about here is that we don't talk about how, um, and I wrote this, instead of number six, promote equity of an understanding of the views, triumphs, and struggles of others. I'm, I feel like we need to make sure that when our librarian is selecting materials, that it shall support and be consistent with the general educational goals of the district and aligned to the strategic, strategic plan. Because nowhere in this whole list does it say that the materials that they're selecting should be consistent with the educational goals of our district, which ultimately should align to the strategic plan.
So under four, I'm sorry, it's a three, B, four, which will eventually be the new B three.
Mm-hmm.
Um, educational significance is the component of where it needs to be aligned?
And so I wrote, I actually crossed that off because I didn't like that word and I wrote academically suitable because I, I felt like academically suitable was a stronger word versus educational significance, where it's focusing on academic excellence. Um, so that's where, like my general takeover of that whole list was it lacked the aligning to the strategic plan and that the purchase, the things that they purchased should in general be aligned to the educational goals of the district or strategic plan. I added that as a point. Um, that was one comment there.
So the current number six, you're saying you don't think aligns to the strategic plan of the district?
No, well, I just don't think it's necessary. I mean, when you're looking at the criteria.
I'm just trying to understand.
Yeah, no, I think, yeah, I crossed that out and I wrote shall support and be consistent with the general educational goals of the district and aligned to the strategic plan.
So promoting equity or an understanding of the views, triumphs, or struggles of others does not align with our strategic plan?
No, I just didn't think it, I didn't say that, I did not say that. What I said is I don't think number six is necessary.
Okay.
To have it in this criteria selection. I think it's more important to pick out books that are, that are help our students with their academics than promoting equity and their worldviews and all those things.
Okay. I just wanted clarity there.
Yeah.
Thanks.
It seems to me, uh, that as you go down the list, you're probably hearing me say this or not, that some things just go without saying. It seems to me that if we are providing materials that, that do enrich and support, that do promote reading for pleasure, that do reflect these values of, of, of art and literature and educational significance, that they do promote critical thinking, then six happens. I don't think it needs to be there. I think it's worth salad that is unnecessary. If we're doing one through five, six will happen. That's just my, my thought. I just don't, I just don't think it's necessary.
If it's the will of the board.
If it's the will of the board to, to look at removing that, I'll have to double check with Legal too to make sure that's not in there in order to meet the new statutory requirements either. But it would be helpful for me, as all this feedback is coming through, if this is the will of the board, so that I know what to, to bring forward to the next meeting or not. So in terms of the feedback on three, B, one through what should be five, is, can I just get a better understanding of what the will of the board is on, on that? So I know what to actually make edits for, for the next meeting?
I disagree, I think it's needed. And with all due respect, I don't think equity is word salad, I think it's crucial. So I, I would like to keep it in. We have an equity resolution with our district. And I think this leads to.
I agree with Director Allston. I think understanding the views, triumphs, and struggles of others is very much like inherent in reading stories about other people that we can't have lived experience of in our own bubble, in our own worlds. And I think that's exactly what library materials are about.
I'm, I'm, I like six two. Just got done reading a book also that, that would fit that category perfectly. And so, I, and again, if it's, um, if it helps with the understanding of the selection criteria, even if it is duplicative, I don't see a problem with leaving it in.
I also, um, I, I don't remember this being discussed in depth during the Policy Advisory Committee. Listening to some of the feedback, I can, I can hear their, I can hear the points of view, but I also don't have a problem with it being left in there. I think, I think stating that it would automatically have, I don't know, I guess, I just don't have a... I would say that my, my preference, given the, it going through Policy Committee and, and it not, I guess my preference would be to leave it as is.
And I would just say, is, if we're gonna leave, first of all, I think it needs to go through Teaching and Learning Committee. I think that's great, that it's going through Teaching and Learning and get their feedback. The other thing I would just say is, can we please add something in that our books in the library should help to support the education of our students? I mean, I'm just, I'm, like, it's kind of, I'm not, kind of not seeing it here, you know what I mean?
So can I get feedback then on B? It's listed right now as four, but would be three. On educational significance or changing it to, I'm sorry, Director Atkinson?
I had academically suitable. Like, they have to be suitable for the academic, like, they have to be academically suitable. That's, that's actually the language that's used in the Supreme Court case, which is, um, which one is it? Sorry, I listened to it today. It's the PICO, four of education versus PICO. They use two words in there, they use provolocally vaguer. Basically, they, they basically said like, books should not be included in the library if they're provolocally vaguer, and they should be included in the library if they're academically suitable. It's actually a pretty easy case to read. So that's why I like the language in that case, or in that, as academically suitable.
Will the board between educationally significant versus academically suitable?
I'll start, um, I like educational significance. I think academically suitable is a little too hard to define. And, um, having read the PICO case too, I'm not quite sure if that was the point of the PICO case. So, um, I, I would rely on our legal counsel. If they put this language in there, I am certainly fine with it. But I do, I would have concern over academically suitable, just because that is a very hard-to define term. And I think significance for education is kind of embedded in the whole selection criteria anyways. Just my thought. I mean, I didn't, I already sent in my comments and notes on this, and I did not have a problem with the educational significance.
I'm fine with educational significance.
And then I have a question, I heard you say that, your friends, you, does everybody get to provide feedback on policies when working on them?
Director Atkinson, is my understanding-
I haven't done that, so I'm just curious.
It's my understanding that we submit our, our materials Monday before the board meeting, and then board members try to submit all their feedback and questions by Friday to help facilitate the conversation at the board meeting.
Oh, okay, I, I, okay.
I'm sorry, to go back, I just want to make sure it doesn't get missed, so I, I know what I'm bringing back forth. So can I just make sure I hear from the whole board on, on this one?
I'm comfortable with the language that's in there, given it went through Legal, so. And that was the recommendation.
I, I could go either way, I don't think it, I don't think it matters.
Okay. And then another concern I had, and I actually would like to get Director White's feedback on this, because in other policies I've read, again, several boards are working on this policy, other boards talk about allowing residents to be a part of the review, you know, if there's a, a book to be challenged, residents can have the right to do that as well. We do not list, list residents, and I know we've talked about this in the past, but Director White being new, I'd love to get your perspective as a resident.
Director Atkinson, just to confirm where we're at in policy, are you under five E?
So I jumped, um, my sincere apologies, I jumped all the way to five, request to remove specific library materials. So in that list, we talk about, and I know in our other 60, 60s, whatever the 606 policy is for just regular curriculum, residents are included, but then in this one, we did not include residents. So, I just wanted to-
I think, are you on five C?
Oh, I'm sorry, no, I'm five A.
Five A, sorry, okay, thank you.
Yep, five A. So we list out who can challenge. So an eighteen-year-old student who attends school. If they're not, it's a parent or guardian, who is less than an eighteen-year-old who attends the school. And then, it says also that the principal of the building in which the library materials located, the district superintendent, or a quorum of the school board as evidenced by a vote at the school board in open meeting. Those are all ways that these items can be challenged, but we do not talk about residents.
And, um, we did have this conversation in Policy Advisory Committee, and I, I know I'm repeating myself, but to your point, Director Atkinson, for Director White's feedback. The Policy Advisory Committee, from my perspective, and Director Bullion, and Dr. Edwards, Dr. Thomas, please chime in if, if you recall differently. They felt very strongly that library selection materials should be able to be reviewed and challenged by those that are impacted in the buildings. And having community members that aren't in the buildings accessible to, there was concern about their ability to limit access for all students within those buildings, which felt very different to the Policy Advisory Committee than curriculum-type conversation. So, based off of the, the original committee that reviewed this and the Policy Advisory Committee that reviewed this, they both felt very strongly to not have citizens as part of, or taxpayers as part of that list. Because those that are directly impacted the library should be the ones that, that have that, that voice. But that was my recollection of those meetings from, from that feedback. That's why we left it with the legal language and didn't make any changes to that.
So in the past, I mean, I don't know, what's the history here? Who, who in the past has, has challenged a, a material? Is it exclusively a parent, or?
It has been-
Parents, yes. Have we ever had-
It's only been, it's only been parents.
I think in our district, we've only had parents. I think, I've read policies that say residents, because the residents would say, well, we're taxpayers, so we should, we're buying, you know, we're paying to fund some of these material, we're paying. So, that's the only reason I brought it up, and I wanted to reflect this, so. The other thing is number B, the limited number requests. Because of the time required to process a request for removal, the district will process no more than nine requests, one for each full month that school is in session for removal per school year. I just, I wonder if this is necessary. And then, the other thing is, we don't even in here list, like, we, in our old policy, we used to say like, the process will be done within a month. So, like, we used to have much more like guidelines on how long the process would actually take. And, I don't know, I just don't understand, I, if we have a whole slew of books that are questionable, which we don't, like, people ask me all the time, and I'm like, our district is actually really clean. We've, we've, we've done a good job of, our, our media specialists have done a really good job, for the most part, of monitoring what's in our libraries. But, um, I mean, would we limit it? I mean, I just, if, if, I, I just, I think that's, for me.
Do you do- I'm sorry. Okay, sorry, just for, to do a thorough job, this is a, there's a lot involved in this process. And then just the couple that we've had holds a lot of time from folks to be able to go through this process, review the materials, et cetera. I think it's reasonable, to your very point, that, you know, our media centers are pretty, pretty standard media centers. So, putting a cap actually kind of doesn't really, it's kind of a moot point. If, if one is true, that our media centers are in decent shape. Opening it up infinitely doesn't really make sense. I would also just liken this to data requests. You know, if we had the ability to cap, just because of the time it takes for everything else that our media specialists are doing, we don't want to burden them with that. And, you know, if it's not a common practice, capping is not impeding anybody at this point. So if we find that we get a surge, we can, and maybe the board wants to redress that.
We can re-bring it forward, yeah. So, yeah, like I-
From Legal's perspective, the rationale why they have it in their draft policy is to limit that, that overall risk to districts, should they all of a sudden get sixty that come in, and you have it in your policy, it only is going to take you thirty days, but you get sixty that come in all, out of nowhere, you're setting yourself up for a policy that you're going to be in violation of, because you just optimize, you can't, you can't complete that. So, in terms of like strategically looking at our, our strategic plan and optimizing our resources and setting clear expectations with our, within our policies, this helps create that expectation that this is what we, this is what our resources can support. This is how the cap, what we could get reasonably down within a year. Was the rationale behind Legal's including it.
Yeah, thanks. And then moving on. Under E, the appointment of the review committee. I'm still challenged with this, um, with the, who, who picks the committee? Because ultimately, the board is elected, we are elected as representatives of the committee. And ultimately, the books and the curriculum and all, everything located in the school districts should really ultimately represent the views and the values of the, of the community. And so, my question is, and I've seen this written in other policies, where the school board actually picks the committee. So every board director will pick one person or whatever. Yes, they can be made up of this list, and I'm fine with the list. But, um, I'm wondering, because it says in Minnesota State statute that the board is, has, is actually responsible for, it says textbooks in the statute, but ultimately-
That's curriculum.
Well, textbooks can be, textbooks are textbooks, I mean-
Textbooks are a part of our curriculum.
I, I think, I, I understand what you're saying. But you're getting real close to the line of, of managing there. We certainly can say, "Dr. Thomas, put a committee together." That's well within our right. I'm not sure it's within our right to do that work for him. That, that, that's getting, it may or may not be, to, to me, and the way I understand our role, that's getting either close to the line, or it's pretty fuzzy.
Yeah, I mean, man, management-
So, my, my point is, we have to be able to say to Dr. Thomas, "We trust you to put this committee together in a way that reflects the views of the community," that's completely reasonable. But to do what you're saying, again, I think we might muddy the pool and get close to the line.
Well, I think, let me explain it a little differently. We review the charters for our finance committee, we review the charters for our Teaching and Learning Committee. So I was just thinking of it in that respect, of like, you see what I'm saying?
Those are board committees?
Yeah, that's, see, that's why I look at this as a board committee.
This is not a board, this is not a board committee.
Okay, and I, I saw it as a board committee, so, um, okay.
So Director Atkinson, I think a good distinguisher in my mind, if it's helpful, just a perspective, the board committees, under the two hundred policies that are lined out and described, they have different procedures and policies than these other committees that we do, whether that's the SPED committee, or the insurance curriculum, or the insurance committee that we just had today. Those are, those are both using the term committee, but they're different in terms of how they're structured.
All right, thank you. And then, going all the way down to, let's see, it is under I for review and report. So, I was part of one of the review processes last year, and the policy, or when we did the, the book review, it was part of open meeting law. We, it was whatever, our policy said it was subject to open meeting law. And so, the review was open to the public. And I personally thought it was really helpful to be open to the public, because I thought it was really great for the public to hear the different perspectives and maybe understand why a book is in our library, or versus maybe why a book was being challenged for different reasons. Under here, we're saying, "A meeting is not required." So that, to me, tells me that we're not going to be following that process, is that correct?
Director Atkinson, I believe the rationale for legal counsel to have that in here is the opportunity for the media specialist, along with the superintendent and Desneys, to make a determination in a timely manner, should the meeting not be needed, to make that decision, and potentially withdraw a material quickly, is the rationale that I believe that came from. And we've had experiences with that in the past, where there's a material that came to attention that we needed to remove in a timely manner, and we exercised that right. This is documenting that, that that would, that would be one of those situations, that we would be able to move quickly on requests.
But, gen- general practices, they will be, there will be a public meeting, you know, to, to thoroughly review. If there was something, there was a book, as was referenced, that was clearly in, in, not something that we would want in our libraries, and we didn't pull a task force together, I directed it to be removed. So, so that's, that's what happened in that, in that regard to that, to that particular book.
Well, maybe that needs to be worded a little differently. Maybe I'm, or am I reading it incorrectly? It says a meeting's not required. The other thing that I, I found between the two book reviews that we had, and I'm just again going based on experience and looking at other policies. At the review process, I believe in one of them, we actually did a vote, and in the other one, there was no vote, or vice versa, and I can't remember, it was a long time ago. But in one of the policies I read, they write that decisions are rendered by a majority vote, and a tie remains a status quo, and voting is closed ballot. So they actually give a very distinctive description of how it will be determined in the, in the review and the reporting process, that decisions are rendered by a majority vote, a tie remains status quo, and voting is closed ballot. The other thing that I really liked, and I know this would like extend us working on this policy, but the school district, one of a, a very large school district in our state actually, is working on a code of conduct for people who attend the review committee, and they're working on a code of conduct for people who are part of the review committee. And so there basically are different, like, rules. Like, if, if you're going to attend the meeting, you have to follow this code of conduct. And if you're going to be part of the review committee, you have to follow this code of conduct. Because even during our review process last year, we had people bring in signs and banners, and it was, it was just, there was no standards, basically. And so I can share those with the rest of the board if you'd like. I brought them, it's actually Oseo School District, so, um, a very large school district who's working on this policy. And they've been working on it for weeks and weeks and weeks and weeks, so, kind of, but. So I liked it added, like, a little bit more robust language in there about voting process.
I, I might just comment on that, that that could lean into the procedural piece a little bit more. Because we, we, well, I mean it from a standpoint of, under the direction of the superintendent, since it's not a board committee, so kind of out of our purview, however, we're saying in our policy, after voting, we're acknowledging that there would be voting, but we're not going to give direction on exactly what that would look like.
So you're saying it should be under the procedure part, yeah?
Yeah, that's kind of where my head went, went with that.
Yeah, as long as there's a standard, because like I said, I think it was different in each of the different processes, so.
Standard procedure.
Yeah, standard procedure. And then I can share with you the other, like I said, the code of conduct, I thought those were really helpful.
So, I'm sorry, before we move on, I'm just going to be a little slicker and make sure that I know what to change and not to change. So we're good with keeping- So, we're good with keeping that language as is and make, and bringing forward through a procedure documentation that would be more the, the process of voting.
I, I think that would be helpful.
That's under Dr. Thomas's.
Yeah.
That is under Dr. Thomas's, and right, so, I just wanted to make sure.
For this policy's purposes, I think we're fine.
Okay. And then I have one more thing. So, um, under the appeal process, so, I'm good with most of it, except for the very ending, where it says, "The decision of the superintendent is final unless a quorum of the school board voted at an open meeting to initiate the process to determine whether a specific library material should be removed. If a quorum of the school board initiated the review process, the superintendent's decision may be appealed to the school board. On review, the school board is bound by the review criteria outlined in this policy." And so, I guess we haven't had any books that the board has actually brought forth and said, "We need to vote, that we want to review these." So, it's basically saying if a parent brings forth, if I'm understanding this correctly, correct me if I'm wrong, if a parent brings forth a book and challenges it, it goes through the committee, and it still gets approved to be in the school district, which two of them did last year, that parent can then appeal it to the superintendent, and the superintendent can say, "Nope, I, we're good with this." And in the past, it could go to the board for a final decision, and this is saying that doesn't happen because the board didn't initiate the process. Is that correct?
I think this is saying, um, sorry, Director Atkinson, I think this is saying unless the board chooses to bring it forward to a board meeting, so similar to like your future agenda items, a quorum of the board would need to say, "We would like to bring this forward and review this process at the board table."
And I would just say that in MSBA's policy, it, under number six, it literally says, "The requister shall have the right to appeal the decision of the superintendent to the school board."
And, and that, that's what this is saying, through our legal attorney's lens, but that is the conversation that was shared with us by Legal, that, um, the board is the appellate court, if you will.
The board has ultimate authority over the materials.
Yeah, we would come to the, it would come, um, board has the ability to hear an appeal above and beyond where things landed with the superintendent's designees process, if you will, or the superintendent's process. If a book challenge is not something that, um, a community member liked, then they could say, um, "I would like to bring this forward to, to the board's consideration." It, it is a, is a possibility. Or the board as a quorum, if you all, um, say, you know what, that last book challenge, and there's a quorum to say, "We would like to review that ourselves," that could be something that you could initiate, eh, as a, as a board.
So...
As a majority, yeah.
Yeah, so, to be clear, um, a citizen, or a, a, somebody who appeals to superintendent, the superintendent overrules it, they could email the board, and at an open meeting, the board could say whether or not they're going, just to keep up with the case language, the, the board at an open meeting would determine whether or not they're going to review it. So, almost kind of like the Supreme Court says, like, "I'm not listening to that," or "I am going to listen to that."
Oh, okay.
"Now, I'm going to take up this case, or I'm not going to take up this case." It gives the board an ability to, whether, say whether or not, as, as the will of the board, do they want to take this up, and do they want to listen to this or not? Are they going to stand by the superintendent's decision without, uh, without further appeal process?
Okay, that makes a lot more sense.
So, it doesn't limit the ability for the board to, it just has the board an additional decision on the, on the will of the board for them to determine whether or not they are going to take up the appeal.
Got it.
Okay.
That makes more sense, written that way. And then the, the only other thing is, um, I actually like the idea of shortening the number of days, that they have to do their written appeal within five calendar days is what I've read in some other policies versus 14. So, then it kind of shortens that whole process, so, you know, I don't know. That's petty, but, um, I, that was another, one other little comment I had, and believe you're right, that are all my comments.
Just from a personal standpoint, Director Atkinson, um, I, I'm a, a introverted processor, so five days would feel very pressuring to me.
Yeah.
Um, so, I mean, I, I, again, I'll go with whatever the will of the board is, but I would just say from a, a professional standpoint, five days feels a lot of pressure to determine whether or not you want to write an appeal, put the work into it, you know, vacations, kids, all that comes into play, so...
I don't really care, like I said, I just read it in other policies, so...
Okay.
So, that's all I have as a board just to answer. Does anybody else have anything?
I took, just, just a couple of things. Um, under two D, that, that would have seemed, you said that, that the definition came straight from the, from the Supreme Court case. Would it, would it help, would it be helpful to add at the end of the sentence that says, "When taken as a whole does not have serious literary, artistic, political, uh, or scientific value," to add educational in there? Because one person's obscene is another person's whatever. And if we keep going back to educational value, I, I think that, that helps that, that paragraph, it automatically, on its own, removes a lot of controversy around what can you have in a, in a library, that's just, I think that one word would help.
Director White, I, I would, if that is the will of the board to look at that, I would like to seek legal counsel on that, because that changes the definition of obscene that's been upheld by the, by a Supreme Court case in case law. Um, so I would, I would just caution the board on changing a definition that's, that's very clearly been stated in case law. Um, I do feel from my perspective that the three B would be where we would rely on that, whereas the two D is just the definition of obscene. Um, but I, I'm open to the will of the board, that's just my perspective.
And which case law is that coming out of? I, because I don't see that, I mean, I don't see that in MSBA's policy either, not that their policies are perfect, but I'm just curious which law.
Um, if you look at the case law, um, from Miller versus California...
Oh, that one, okay.
And then we also have the reference to Minnesota State statute 617 dot 241.
The reference of obscene materials, yeah.
So, just checking what the board is, um, Director White, where you all are at with thumbs, pending our legal review, if that would substantially change, um, the, the definition? Or if we maintain it, and if so, we would maintain it in B. But just wanted to get the will of the board, if that's something we will pursue.
If this is, um, the definition of obscene by itself, um...
For legal definition, statute.
Yeah. I would say, I would want to hear what Legal had to say. I, I think this is taken from legal advice, so I'm fine with it as, as it is.
But if adding educational doesn't change, um, the interpretation, then we can find that out. So, that's two of you, that, to pursue the potential of adding education.
Um, my, um, my concern is, is this where we want to spend our money? If Legal's already given us this definition, it matches statute in the Supreme Court, I'm not quite sure that's what I would want to spend a couple hundred dollars per hour on, but that's just me.
Good.
I agree.
Okay.
Um, I think we're going to have some serious challenges with this policy coming out of teaching and learning, so I think it's worth looking at it, so...
If I could seek some clarification on that topic, um, I, I, my intent would be simply to informational only. I am not going to Teaching and Learning Advisory seeking additional comment, lest that were the will of the board at this point, because of the amount of vetting that this policy has had through a series of reviews, that would be my recommendation.
And I would be concerned if you did send it through teaching and learning, since this isn't curriculum, but...
It is, I mean, that's why we went through it the first time, we spent a whole, whole session going through this. So...
Yep.
I would expect it to go through teaching and learning, which is, I've said in the past.
And it has?
Yes. All the way back in January, I had a little, Dave Gill talking about it.
Statutory changes, as well as the, um, as well as the...
Emily, I don't know if you're coming to our meeting on Monday, but, um, it'd be great to have your expertise there to, to talk about why some of this stuff is in there, and why, I mean, versus just a presentation, and then it upsets everybody, or half, whatever, people on the curriculum committee, who are representatives of parents and community members.
Yeah, I think what we do is, we would get the, we would get the perspectives from that, you know? It may or may not change the policy, but definitely they're going to be able to share their perspectives on that. I want to just be clear about that. Sorry, if that was interpreted as information only, you can't speak. They will be able to speak and, and, and share or get clarification.
I just want to be cognizant of the...
They're not voting or approving a policy, per se.
...that the policy committee, in consultation with Legal, are legal, um, representation in creation of said policy as a result of recent legislative changes.
So, I would support...
I would support seeing it, because I think any way we can add in educational value, because at the end of the day, every book we buy should be educating our students somehow, whether it's pleasure of learning, or reading, or whatever, but they go to the library to learn something, I mean...
So, I think, yeah, I mean, I think we're all in agreement on that, and I think, I mean, in my view, not to, I don't want to minimize section 3B. Like, there's a lot of information there pertaining to what we all are here talking about in terms of educational value. So, I mean, can we add some language to that, maybe? Does it capture already what we view as, like, I think it does. I think we were, you know, Director White, you said you thought one through five captured it, therefore six happens, and the will of the board was to keep six in there, but still the same outcome, you know? So, um, I don't want to minimize, I should say, ah, sorry, the numbers are wrong, so, let's do, you know what I mean?
I'm reading yours.
You're not, yes, but I think we're, I think that's there, I don't want to say it's not there. So, just, I mean, as we're talking about this, I want to like highlight that.
I would just like to see it more robust, and I think by doing that, it might add that robustness to it. Um, because academic excellence is on our strategic plan, it's one of the things that we talked about the most, and so, ultimately, we don't have just a lot of books in the library so people can go read for fun. I mean, we have to have materials that support our curriculum and support our students' ability to learn.
So, would you, so adding academic excellence somewhere in that section 3B, like you talked about, would be...
Could I offer maybe a recommendation for consideration? In order for, to, because I, I, as I've expressed, I have concerns with changing legal definition based off of case law, but I am, I'm happy to ask Legal about it as well. Um, would it, would it be helpful to make it more robust in the purpose statement? A statement around the strategic direction or strategic plan, and I can draft something to bring forward for consideration? Um, that just makes it clear from the get-go, the purpose of, you know, because that very first one is a vital component of student education, and we can maybe make that a little bit more robust, a little bit more explicit...
Aligned with the...
Then, as you're reading the policy, you already have that, it's overarching, it's an umbrella, everything underneath it is under that purpose, so maybe that could help, and not impede with a case, a, a definition. Would that suffice, Dr. White?
Yeah, that's, that's, that's...
Yeah, and I actually had that written into the purpose statement. I had at the very end of the very first, first section, after the word "school," period, and I have "and are academically suitable." So, I actually added that in there.
I just want to, because we're, we've been on this for quite some time, um, and, um, in all fairness, most of us are fine with that, I believe. Um, I think we have a couple of questions that Director Herman has as a takeaway, but, um, I, I can speak for myself, I'd like to hear from everybody else, that the majority of changes and the questions have already had and submitted and reviewed, um, with, um, Director Herman, uh, pursuant to the policy committee. Um, I was, I was fine with it and did receive an answer on, so, um, I am hearing that we have one board director, um, that has some concerns, but I'm not hearing it from the whole board. So, I'd like to try to narrow this down to exactly what direction we're giving to administration as a board, um, so we can kind of, with all due respect, move on.
I think this was the last point, and I think Director Olset was the last remaining person on that point, um, but then everything else, I think, was covered.
Yep.
So, and, and the question, Director Olset, sorry, I know we kind of went in and out. The, Director White talked about the, uh, language of three, sorry, two D, to add, um, language around educational value, and, um, went back and forth a bit on that, and then Director Herman just recommending to not go into the legal vetting of that at an hourly rate, and perhaps could that be, uh, addressed in the purpose statement? So, if we're going to do that, um, you were the last person to kind of weigh in on, um, do we keep things as is, or would you also, um, support, uh, adding educational value aligned to kind of the strat plan stronger in the purpose statement?
So, two D, I just wanted, because that was kind of a long addition, two D, um, a change, there was a, a, a request to change two D, the recommendation was because Legal had, because this was the legal definition, do we want to go to Legal and see if they want to change it? Or, Dr. Her, uh, Director Herman, sorry, I keep elevating yours, I know, uh, made a suggestion of adding the educational significance, I believe, value, to the purpose statement, and making that change, or none at all.
Well, if I could help with, help, I...
Yes, please do. Please sum that up, please.
Based on what, um, Director Herman said, I'd act with drama with request, if we can just, you know, put that, that purpose language just a little bit, I think that more than does what I was looking for.
I'm seeing a lot ahead now, it's great tweaking the purpose statement.
Is anyone not okay? What's adjusting the purpose statement to add the educational value a little bit stronger?
I will work on drafting something for that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. Any other questions or comments on six oh six dot five? Okay, moving on to seven oh one. I need to go with Director Herman, I think.
Um, seven oh one, um, I do not believe we had any substantial changes to this, we're just structurally making adjustments and changes based off of our continuing attempt as a policy advisory committee to streamline some things within policy. Also adding the, um, district website, now that we no longer have a newspaper available.
Questions or feedback on this one? Let me move forward to seven oh one dot two. So, seven oh one dot two, um, the major changes here, um, I'll have Director Ferguson speak to as well, um, under the minimum fund balance, removing the unassigned and the range, so the fund balance is at least eight percent.
Yeah, we reviewed actually, um, 50 different, um, school districts, the, um, MS, or the MasBowl group has a, um, listing of all of, not all, has many school districts and what their fund balance policy is, and there are none of them that have on the assigned, it is just the unassigned. Um, and many of them have a five percent minimum, um, there are a few that have eight to 12, there's a couple of them that have 15 percent, um, but as we met with the finance advisory committee and the policy committee, um, we agreed it would be much less confusing if we took out the assigned fund balance and just include the unassigned, which is what every other district does. And then we had a quite robust conversation about, um, whether we wanted to have a range. Um, and I think the, we and Director Bullion, we had, um, a conversation that if we have a range of eight to 12, it kind of limits us, we felt like it was, you know... We felt like it was blocking us in. Whereas if we say a minimum of eight percent and then review it every year, that there's more of an opportunity to kind of adjust it to what the reality is.
Just add a little bit from the policy advisory committee discussion. You know, the, the pros to having a range that were discussed at policy advisory committee was ensuring that the dollars that we have available right now are spent on our kids right now. And that concern of having a fund balance be too high and padding a quote unquote savings account too much and having it in the twenties or thirties or something along those lines.
Wouldn't that be nice?
But, but the, the flip side to that conversation is just how much confusion this has caused around, it's under the minimum fund balance category. And it's saying the range minimally is eight to twelve. So some people read that as the minimum has to be between eight to twelve, it's not a cap. Whereas other people read as a cap. And then the potential of pressures, if it's over the twelve percent, to utilize a fund balance for our ongoing, reoccurring costs versus spending it on a one-time cost. So that removing of the range, ultimately, the policy advisory committee came to the consensus that removing of the range allowed for the flexibility based off of foreseen changes in, in the financial environment that would allow the board to have more flexibility as, making sure there's always that, that floor. But having more flexibility for the board to have a different ceiling.
And if I remember correctly, in that conversation, which we did have, it was a lengthy conversation regarding some of the confusion with the current language. Also, we talked about not wanting to have a snapshot. So if, if we had a fund balance that was over the twelve percent, which sometimes we do, being mindful that this isn't just taken by a month-to-month snapshot because it does fluctuate. And so there was much conversation regarding that. And we came to a consensus that to alleviate confusion that often lies with the current language would be to how it is recommended in this policy.
Thank you for your explanation because I did have a question on that. Because that's a, it's a very small change, but it's a big change in our policy. So thank you for explaining because that was my question. So what you say makes a lot of sense.
Um, the rest of the changes were just structural changes. Nothing that was substantial. Oh, go ahead, go ahead.
So when I see four to six weeks, that makes me a little nervous, just me personally. Doesn't seem like it's enough, but you're, you're comfortable with that eight percent? You know, and I'm assuming that will always equal in that range of weeks, what the budget is. Are you confident that you will be comfortable with that ninety-nine percent of the time?
Yes, I, I actually am. Because there's also the restricted fund balance, which if we know we have something that we're going to need to spend in the next couple of years, we can always put money in the restricted fund balance that will set aside those dollars specifically for a purpose. Again, I think the challenge is especially kind of what districts are going through right now, with most of them having to look at reductions. I, I, I think we need to look at this year's money for this year's kids and decide what, where our priorities are. And if we start getting a much higher fund balance and we keep saying there are still needs, why aren't we addressing those needs with this fund balance? So I, in my experience of doing fund balance policies over my third-year career, I, I'm fairly, I mean, ninety-five percent confident that, that this will be fine. And again, we look at it, we provide financial statements every month to the board. So we're constantly looking at it. If we know things are going to maybe not end up the way that we think we are, we still have time to adjust and.
And I would just say, I, I'm personally only having four to six weeks of savings in our savings account. In my own personal savings account, it'd make me very nervous. I would love to see the number closer to twelve percent, especially since we're taking out the unassigned and the assigned. So to me, this feels like we're even reducing it even farther because, if I'm understanding this correctly, because now we're taking away the assigned, even though I know the assigned doesn't go away. I, I don't know. I, I get the, I get that we want to spend on the kids, which we have done in the past. The very first year on the board here, we invested a million and a half or whatever it was. And so we have done that in the past. But going down to only having four to six weeks in our savings account is very concerning to me. It doesn't make me comfortable or feel like it's a fiscally responsible thing to do. So that's just my, I would like to see it closer to, I'd like to see it just stay at twelve percent.
I was part of that finance committee meeting where we talked about it collectively. And I mean, I'm comfortable at eight percent. Change, going to unassigned, it's a smaller amount of money, right? So that logically aligns with that. Like, if you have assigned and unassigned, the twelve percent makes more sense. The, I didn't mind actually keeping a range in there because I do feel like spending the money on the kid, you know, today's money on today's kids is important. But I think it is hard to manage in our, in our somewhat volatile financial world. I mean, look at the experience we had during COVID when we had excess funds that we, I mean, at the time, we, it was moving so quickly and things were changing so quickly from a staffing percentage. It was hard to pin down exactly where we were. So, so I don't, I, I, I supported this language, the finance committee did as well. I can understand the value of our range as well, so. And just even looking, when we were discussing this, I think even if you looked through our past few months, there was, I mean, the fund, the fund balance had large, large fluctuations. And so, yeah. We, you know, we did discuss this really thoroughly, asking Director Frederickson if she, about her comfortability. Yeah, I, I know.
And I think one of the conversations we had at the policy committee was, this isn't just going to be a one and done. We review this every month, there's new financial statements. If it looks like there's going to be an issue, the board can certainly, you know, recommend that we change the, increase the, whatever the minimum is. And it's not going to be done just in isolation. We are constantly looking everyone and reviewing what we expect to happen in the next few months. I think that was the policy committee felt comfortable that as long as we were reviewing it.
Do we look even as it, as it is? Any other questions or comments for seven oh one dot two? Okay, two. Seven oh two, there were no substantial changes, just formatting changes and adding label references. No comments? Okay, seven oh two dot one. No changes, just cleanup. And seven oh three. Seven oh three, Tammy, do you want to speak to the edits proposed around the RFP process for auditing?
Yes. So the, the finance committee and the policy committee both had lengthy conversations about whether we wanted to specify in policy that we would do an RFP every five years. We certainly can. I, I just hesitate to put it in policy. One of the challenges that I think you could talk to any business manager in any district will tell you that one of the challenges you have when you get a new auditing firm is they have new software, they have new process on what they're requiring from you. Their, their reports look different, the information they're asking you for looks a little different than. So it takes almost two years to kind of get into the rhythm of, of they can come in, you know exactly how they want the data, you know what they're going to ask for, you know what their software is, you upload the files and everything works very smoothly. And if you're changing that every five years, it just becomes kind of a burden, if you will, that, that we have to kind of spend more time than what we normally would. And again, this doesn't preclude us from doing an RFP. I just, again, hesitate to just have it in policy that we're going to do it every five years.
This is the one question I had on this one. Because I do feel an RFP process is, is, is smart. Is there a way to, and I also see your point too, like it takes, if you've got a new company, it takes a while to get up to speed and all of that. So I, I understand that. Although I do think it's just responsible to do an RFP for different services. Do we have to put, instead of taking the entire line out, can we take out, you know, say, we'll, we'll conduct a request for proposal for auditing services as needed? Or as the finance department, I, I don't know what the language would be. Maybe we don't put a finite number on it, but I hesitated taking out the, the line entirely.
Yeah, one of the, just, one of the other challenges we have is audit firms are kind of eating each other up. So there, there used to be ten that you could choose from, and now there's like three or four. Because they're all combining. So Clifton Larson Allen used to be two different firms. Clifton Larson Allen, MMKR, KDB. Those are going to be the three that you're going to find in most school districts. So when you do an RFP, you're going to get the same three that are going to bid on it. And I don't, there's not going to be a lot of, a lot of other audit firms that are going to specialize in school districts. The other thing that we talked about, the finance committee, is right now, because we've had MMKR now for a couple of years, we, they have us as one of the first districts that they audit in their schedule. And because we've been with them, that they've kept that schedule. If we go to a different audit firm, we're going to have to fit into their schedule. And it may not be July that they start the audit and move on in October. It may be they can't start until October and we're done in, you know, November or December even. So it, it's going to affect the, kind of the scheduling of when the audit is completed. Not that it's not workable, it's just we really like being first. Because it gets it done and we can spend the summer getting the, all the information ready and just be done with it rather than kind of drag it out.
One of the reasons why businesses by boards and stuff like that do mandate a change, or at least going out and looking for changes so the organization doesn't become too comfortable with the auditors. So when you get a relationship, then they can miss stuff. So they do it to get a, a more unbiased viewpoint when you do change.
Yep, and we certainly had that conversation too, that, that is one of the disadvantages of, of keeping the same firm.
Could you write in language, because I, I hear all your points and I fully understand it as far as consistency. Could we write in something that says the district will conduct a request for RFP at, with the, at the will of the board? So like, as we see things arise and different things happen, the, the board can request sure RFP?
I mean, we're certainly not opposed to doing an RFP. I just, you know, just hesitate to put it in policy because then if you don't do it every five years, and they're very time-consuming to try to do an RFP, it's, it's a huge process.
I think that's a good recommendation because I think it's, if there's no finite time. There's a loyalty factor, right, which the board has turned over. So then that's going to be a natural, like, well, should we consider something else? And, and it's in partnership, it's the will of the board, it's not one, it's in partnership with maybe a recommendation too from administration at times.
Can I, I'd like to add something because during our organizational meetings, we approve the audit firm for the year. So there has to be a timing involved also with the board requesting it. Because once we approve it in the organizational meeting, and just like Clifton Larson Allen before MMKR, we were the first ones for them, but we had had them for, I think, over ten years. So the board did speak and say we need to change. That happened. And I don't remember, I think I was part of it when they added in the five years. So, but we had to make the change, I think, by September one for the following year or something, to vote on it and send the RFP out. So that needs to be considered.
Yeah, it's, it's a long process.
Yeah.
But I think that would be right because the board would either approve it or not, which they're, then they could consider it for the next year.
Yeah, but if we get to the organizational meeting and someone says something when we're approving it for that year, you've already lost that year. So there's, if there could be language in here that says if the board does choose as a reminder.
Yeah.
Otherwise, we're going to miss the window consistently, especially with turnover.
Okay.
Okay, so I am hearing that the will of the board is to resurrect J, but edit it so it doesn't say every five years. It says at the will of the board by a defined deadline that I will get from Director Frederickson before I report. Any other feedback on seven oh three? Seven oh four, there were some additions to this based off of audit recommendations. Is that correct, Tammy? Is that correct, Frederick?
Yes.
And then structural changes.
Yep, so we changed in general statement of policy, which I guess will be two. A, right now, capital assets, anything over five thousand dollars, you capitalize. And if you buy a hundred something that all costs five thousand dollars, you have to capitalize all one hundred items. So what we're proposing is that if individual assets are grouped together, it's the same thing that you're buying, you're just buying a mass quantity, that we can group those assets and capitalize them together if the cost is over fifty thousand dollars. Just going to save a tremendous amount of time. I mean, we still have all the asset numbers, we still have each item listed separately, but we don't have to capitalize all one hundred items.
You capitalize them as a group.
As a group.
Yeah. And that's as much educational accounting that I can talk about.
I think the thing that always confused me about the capital assets is running of depreciation and managing mass depreciations at certain types of, certain times of the year. And how that's impacted, obviously, by booking altogether. It makes it a lot easier for you, but does that make another change in the accounting system and the way it runs or?
No, because you're, you're assuming that each of these assets are the same. So for instance, if you were to buy a hundred laptops, I mean, they don't cost five thousand dollars anymore. But if you bought a hundred laptops for five thousand dollars apiece, right now, we have to put an asset number on a hundred different items. And then you have to figure the depreciation on all each hundred items. Where if we just say we're buying a hundred of them, it costs fifty thousand dollars, we're grouping them together as an asset. Here's a list of all of the asset numbers or serial numbers or however we're going to track it. Then you just have one depreciation because they're all the same. You bought them on the same day, they're the same item. Just grouping them together.
And this does not change the. And this does not change the accounting system to create that?
Okay. Makes it a lot easier because we don't have to enter 100 items.
Somebody's going to be very excited about this.
Any other questions or concerns on that policy? 705, there is no substantial changes, structural changes in adding statute numbers. No questions or concerns on that? 706. Added a section at the bottom in regards to the board accepting gifts, grants or devices in alignment with MSO statute and then the legal references. Any questions or concerns, feedback on 706? 710. There was no changes to this except for moving the definitions to the end. Any questions or feedback? Moving to 720. Vending machines, there was no substantial changes to this either, just adding the statute numbers and the legal references.
I had an overall question on this one. Did, have we ever, you know, kind of similar to, which again is under a different policy entirely, but similar to like surveying students, what they want and things like that? Have we ever surveyed the students about like what kind of things they wanted in the vending machines?
So we actually don't really have vending machines anymore. There used to be Coca-Cola vending machines in our schools and here. And then we would get a portion of the proceeds. Coca-Cola came in and says, you guys don't make enough money for us, so we're yanking them out. Anything that the students are going to have, if it's in the vending machine, has got to follow the nutrition policies that we have.
They pull those too.
Don't we have a Gatorade machine at the high school?
I don't think so, no. When they went...
Maybe my kid is scamming me then.
So this policy is basically kind of moot right now.
I had to laugh when I saw that.
They get added back in.
Oh, they have vending machines?
Right next to the gumball machine.
And they have money for the vending machines? Really?
Any other questions or feedback on 720? 721. This is the policy that had quite a bit of changes added to it that I am not qualified to explain, so I'm going to have Executive Director Fredrickson.
So basically, this policy, we had to, this was actually an audit comment that we needed to update this policy. Because it doesn't necessarily follow the EDGAR or CFR requirements for federal dollars. We needed to be much more detailed and, basically, what we're, what they, what we've had to do with this policy is when we say we're going to do something, they want you to say who is going to do it and what are they going to do. And we were much more vague in some of our language. So we've had to expand on some of the wording that, for instance, in J, we had to add department requesting to procure material products or services will work with Executive Director of Business or Designee. So it's much more defined on who is going to be doing what. We also had to add some language around kind of what used to be the Buy American policy. You have to attempt to buy, where is it? You have to make an attempt to buy American products or services. And that wasn't as well-defined as it needed to be. So we did have to change that. So all of the changes on here are just to be much more detailed and specific to match some of the CFR requirements that federal government requires.
Well, it looks like they added separation of duties into it.
Yep.
Which makes sense. And we probably wouldn't have had that 10, 15 years ago because we were too small.
Correct.
What Executive Director Fredrickson was referring to earlier is under two acceptable methods procurement each. Where we aligned it to the CFR coding. Any feedback or questions on this policy?
No, I just, we used to have definitions at the front and it's just standard and businesses. So it's a little difficult for me to find them at the end.
So the Policy Advisory Committee, when going through all of our list of things that we're going to standardize, we agreed as a group to move definitions and structures aligning with MSBAs model policy. So when comparing and using that as a reference, it was a little bit easier to follow along. So that, just to explain to the whole group where that came from, that was just one of our attempts to standardize some of our policies.
Is that only in the finance policies?
Because in the book review policy, I have it right here in the definitions in the beginning.
I'll need to, that's a miss on my end then, it should be all policies, so.
No, I'm saying, this is, I have MSBAs policies to see right in here for the book policy and definitions right at the top. One is purpose, two is general statement, and three is definitions. Am I reading that wrong or I...? No, I mean, I always thought the definitions were at the front too.
MSBAs policies are on the board depending on when they last touched them.
I mean, no, this is the brand new book policy.
Yeah, MSBAs are still all over the board.
I don't care, as long as we're consistent. But I do agree, I like them in the beginning too. But if we've changed them all already, but is this the first series of changing them?
We started changing, Dr. Bulleye and I believe, we started changing them all last year.
Oh.
Sequence.
The sequencing.
And the end of, I feel like it was the end, our last, I feel like it was the last meeting that we discussed, we're going forward. I don't know how many have changed so far.
It's in there, I don't, as long as it's consistent, I really don't care. That is, part of the conversation we had as a Policy Advisory Committee is far we're going to try to go through all of them and bring them before it all as a one review under the policy for just structural changes, to do it all. Every one that we don't get done this year, like all the other numbers that we're not reviewing. Because otherwise, when one person starts doing it this way, by the time you get to the third year, switches it back. So we'll try to get it all standardized.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So consistency is very important.
Yeah, we're done with these and these will all be coming to the next board meeting.
On November 19th, they'll be coming for the second reading and for board action.
Right. So please, everybody, when it goes into the packet, up to a week early, please get your feedback into Director Herman ahead of time. Since the, since the board meeting will be our final discussion on it. So moving over to superintendent relations.
Thank you, Chair France, Board of Directors. Just two quick things. One, we are again, and have been for quite some time, getting inundated with a lot of data requests. And I just wanted to let you all know that our team is working as judiciously as they can to manage through. Some of these requests are coming into the hundreds and hundreds of pages and documents. And yes, we do have tools that have created some efficiency, but we've got some monster requests that have come through. Just asking our community to be patient, she's working in a queue. Even if it's something that seemingly is small to someone, it's where things fall in a queue so that she is going in sequential order. It's the best way that we can, it's kind of like where you fall in line. And I'll just remind our community, one of our core beliefs is respect. And it's been reported to me that there have been some sharp comments with our one staff member who's responsible for this. And I just want to reiterate that with our community. We're going to comply and get the data that we can get to our community. I just want to make sure that's done so in a very respectful way. And some of the comments that are being reported, I don't think are appropriate and embody who we are as a community. So I just wanted to share that. Secondly, I'll just share that it was brought to our attention around some ballot language. That's on the current ballot. And there are two different statutes that govern some of that language. One statute governs the notification language. One separate statute governs the ballot language. We've just issued some clarity per consultation with our General Counsel today. That's out for your situational awareness that we just concluded just shortly before the meeting tonight, so that's out there. And just trying to let our community know. The two different languages that exist get to the same outcome, and that is there's an increase in your taxes. I'm not legislator, so I don't know why they have two different language requirements for two different processes that get to the same outcome, but there was. And so that ballot clarification was brought forward today. So that's all on our website as well.
All right, next is informational items. Do we have any other items? Go ahead.
Yep, I would just like to share this document. There were... At the last board meeting, the audit was presented. And there was some concern that we were $7 million over budget. So I wanted to provide this information to you. It's actually pulling this data from our financial statements. So if you start on page 79 from the last board meeting on the financial statement. At the top part, I'm showing the revenue. And our budget was 115.5 million. We ended up at 119.5. And I broke it out to the different categories. So you can see property taxes, we were within 1.1% variance of actuals, budget versus actuals. The investment earnings, we underestimated that. However, if you look at the last five years, they were very inconsistent. We were $30,000 one year, $112,000 the next year, a million the next year. So if you're taking a five-year average, for us to budget 488,000 was actually more than what our averages over the past five years. And we just underestimated it. We actually came in at 1.2 million for investment earnings. Again, it's an average over the past five years and it's just a very difficult number to try to nail on right exactly. The other revenue sources, I put in this little yellow box. We were 1.5 million more than our budget. And you can see where they were. We had 280,000 more than we budgeted for activities and admissions, 190,000 more for donations. Just small miscellaneous, we had 570,000 more. We had insurance recovery, we got a new scoreboard this past year. So we got insurance money for that, that was 312,000. Our third-party billing was 157,000 more than what we had projected. So that came in, 1.5 million more. The rest of it, state sources, we were within 2.2 million. And our federal sources, we did not spend all of our special ed IDA allocation, so our actual spend was less on that. So, and I guess the point in this is the 4 million that we were over budget are things that, investment earnings, something that we can't necessarily just get exact every year. Because again, if you look at our budgets, I've given you a 10-year history of broken down for all of these categories, you can see that the actual amounts go up and down every year. For the expenses, I did the same thing for each of the categories. Where we were overspent, look at the elementary and secondary education. We have $261,000 more of stipends than what we budgeted. We have about $1,005,000 more in salary increases across the board. We had PSEO increase of 320,000. We had many more students took PSEO classes. Our teacher on call invoice was 200,000 more than what we budgeted. Our supplies and curriculum came out about 500,000 more than we budgeted. And again, we had to place a scoreboard, which cost us 312,000. So that's like the 3 million for that category. You can also see we overspent our special education budget by about $2 million. We have significant number of more students with IEP needs, so we did hire more staff and had more expenses. So that's 5 million of the variance. And then I just gave you percentages. The administration was actually 2.1% under budget. The district support services was 2.9% over budget. Volk Ed, 3.5%. Again, most of these are related to salary increases. The instructional support, while we got additional revenue from that yellow box for activities and admissions, that also came with cost to it. So those are reflected in that instructional support. Our transportation budget was overspent by about $750,000. We're not exactly sure why, we've done some analysis to try to figure it out. Dan Powers and I are working to figure out what exactly we overspent on. And it hasn't been any one thing that stands out. It's just every month it's been more than what we thought. We built in a 6% increase, which is what we thought we were going to have when we met with the bus company. It actually came in at 16% more than what we had the year before. So we're doing some, a deeper dive to figure out where that kind of lands. And then our debt service came in over budget because we refunded a bond. So if you take the revenue of 4 million that we were over, the expenses that we were over 6.8, you look at the difference, this board authorized us to use 1.4 million of assigned fund balance. So if you do the calculation, the revenue of 118 million, the other financing, so the 119 million of total revenue, the expenses of 123, subtract those, minus the board authorized use of assigned fund balance, there was actually a change in the unassigned fund balance of 2.8 million. And that's what we overspent. And again, I've explained where each of those categories were. If you want other specific detail, there, again, it's in our financial statement, actually starting on page 79. I just wanted to kind of bring that out, just to make sure everybody understands all the different categories that we have for revenues and expenses. And it's not just one big bucket, they're all many different buckets that we have to look at.
Thank you, I appreciate this. I think, for me personally, I love details. Details help drive decisions. The question I have is about the overage in the elementary education in the salaries. I thought all along that all those increases were in our budget, so what was the disconnect there?
They were, we did add some staff. However, one of the things that you have to keep in mind when we had the teacher negotiations, while we all agreed with what the parameters were, it depended on where they chose to have the increases. There was some increases in longevity, which, again, doesn't affect the bottom line, but it means that every person got paid more for their longevity. Because we have many, I think 60% of our staff have been here on the top step. So all of them got a big bump in longevity, which we paid out. And it didn't affect the actual total spend for the whole entire contract, but it was paying out additional money.
One time.
One time.
Yeah, so the one-time longevity was perhaps what's driving this.
It'll carry forward as we move forward, but we... Well, it'll carry forward as we move forward, but we hadn't budgeted, we had budgeted an increase in salaries, not necessarily in all the longevity, so going forward, that still will be in the contract, but we'll have a better idea, well, until we go through this next contract.
And where are the 4 million dollars of cuts, like where would you see those, because those, we also talked a little bit about that, so they're all.
Kind of mixed in to the different categories, and we just built those in as we did the budget projections.
Well, one example would be administration.
Yep.
Yeah.
But I'm just saying, how do you see it represented, because that number would be higher than.
Right.
Oh, no, no, I see what you're saying.
Yeah, that's one small example.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
How was it, Chair?
Thank you. Next on the item is future agenda topics, and Director White, when you were on the board, we didn't do this, but now we're doing study sessions, at the end of each one, we allow the board members to go around and ask for things that they would like added to future agendas, and then the board approves it or disapproves it with just a thumbs up.
Good.
So, does anybody have any future agenda topics? Hearing none then, I'm going to call for an adjournment, so thank you very much.
Thank you.